So we're gonna call to order and we're gonna start with the Pledge of Believers. Let's lead us to the five United States of America. And your republic where it stands, one nation, universal, with a true justice law. And can I have a motion for approval of the President agenda?
Motion.
Second.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Now, we're gonna start the evening off with a public comment session. As a reminder, or if you haven't been to a meeting before, we tried to aim to keep this public comment session about twenty minutes. It's open to any district stakeholder. And we'll give three minutes per speaker to speak to any topics that pertain to the school. If you are online, you can raise your digital hand in the meeting and when it's your turn, we'll promote you into the meeting and you can speak. If you're here in the room, let's track, you can track down the signup sheet at the front. So do we have, oh, and just as a, I see we're, we've got a note to online, yeah, the microphones don't get turned on until six, so that's why they weren't on.
I wanna make sure that I've emailed that person back just in case.
Do we have anyone signed up? There will be another public comment at the, at the conclusion of the meeting as well.
We do not have. Oh, it's Elias Asimopoulos?
Yep.
Yeah, he's our new music teacher, correct?
Oh, great.
Yeah.
Hello, everyone.
I'll get your back. Do you agree?
Nope. It's me.
There you go.
Hi, everyone. My name is Elias Asimopoulos. As you said, I'm the new high school band teacher here. I'm at Chatham. I wanted to extend a formal invitation to the board and broader Chatham community. We have our first high school winter concert this Thursday evening at seven o'clock at the auditorium. The first time over here at the Jazz Band Choir Orchestra Concert Band will be putting on an evening of music, live and in person. All the students I know have been working very, very hard and we're thankful for the support we receive from the administration, from the board to allow us to be able to be in person, playing music with each other. I know I speak for everyone. I say that we're beyond excited to finally be able to present some music. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. That was Thursday.
Yep, Thursday.
This is open to the public as well?
I believe so, yep. We're gonna be doing all the social distancing, all that stuff that we should have done for people to come to the concert in the other forums.
Great, thank you.
Yep, thank you very much.
Do we have any digital hands? That's it for right now on that?
No.
Okay. So we're gonna move on into board comment. I just wanna just start by saying, you know, there's, there's some, some big topics in the news this week around school safety. We are going to spend a minute or two during the superintendent report to really just talk about how that pertains to Chatham a little bit. And we might have some board comment following that, on that topic. Does anyone have any non-safety related board comment? Of current events here in the school?
I was wondering, I was gonna invite you to, I was gonna invite you to the high school concert. And I hope you'll all be there.
Okay. So we're gonna move on into our student representative report with Mia Porras.
Alright. Okay, okay. Yep, come watch us sing our and perform our hearts out on Friday. It'll be super fun. And auditions for Little Women happened earlier this week, so that's really exciting. So first up on the agenda, I just wanted to discuss COVID communications. So basically, a lot of students, they've come up to me, they've asked like, oh, what do, what do I do if I feel sick in school? Do I go to the nurse? Or whatnot? So I, I said, I'm, I'm not entirely sure. I mean, you can probably find that information online. And I, I didn't know exactly where to direct them, but I think one thing we probably should do is, maybe I talked to Mr. Northson about this and we might send out like a reminder of what to do if you aren't feeling well, or just basically to keep the students, you know, less in the dark, so they know, you know, they can read about it if they wish up to them. So I think obviously this is gonna be a very tough subject to address, but I would like to acknowledge the tragic disturbing events that took place in Michigan on November 30th. Four students lost their lives that day. Other students, teachers, parents, first responders, and the whole community had their lives interrupted and impacted. Kay Meyer, sixteen, Madison Baldwin, seventeen, Hannah St. Juliana, fourteen, and Justin Jilling, seventeen. All of them, someone's child, someone's friend, someone's student. It is extremely unsettling to come to terms with the fact that this could happen anywhere, anytime. School should be a safe space. This shouldn't be happening. Attending school the next day, all I could think about while sitting in my classes was, where would I hide? What can I use to defend myself? What can I and my peers do to keep each other feeling safe? To be honest, I wasn't thinking about what I was supposed to be learning that day. While not all students may have this event on their mind, I can say that many other people I talked to had the same concerns of what to do, how to react and respond. We had questions that needed answers. Some of us are scared and anxious. This statement by no means is meant to create a political discourse or anything along the lines of that. It's meant to remember the students that lost their lives that day and to respond with preventative measures. While this is an extremely heavy topic, I'm including this in my report due to how important it is to equip students with the knowledge how to respond in an emergency like this. Lockdown drills need to be taken seriously among staff and students. Last time there was an in-depth informational session from an expert which from my freshman year. I'm a senior now. I believe more conversations and presentations from knowledgeable individuals answering some of these questions students have will be beneficial to the student body. I met with administration and briefly talked with Deputy Van Ossen about possible discussions and things that can take place. I really appreciate how cooperative administration and Deputy Van Ossen have been so far.
Thank you, Mia. And, and let me just say, I really appreciate you taking some time to really help us gather specific feedback and, and specific concerns to student body. So that's, that's really helpful.
Yeah, does anyone have any questions for me?
Not, not at the moment, but these are certainly on our mind.
Yeah, no problem.
So with that, we're gonna move on into superintendent report from Dr. D'Angelo.
Thank you. I'm just taking a peek at our website. So there is, there is a flowchart. Of course, if you go to the homepage of our website, upper right-hand corner, where it says COVID-19. If you go down the page and we'll be able to make this more prevalent, there is a flowchart in terms of what you should do if you have COVID symptoms. It's labeled as my child has COVID symptoms, but that would apply obviously if a student was doing a self-assessment. But we'll, I'll make sure that Mr. Burns and Mr. Thorson are able to perhaps send that out and then email the students so they're equally as well informed about where they can go to see a flowchart to help them do a self-assessment on their, on their health. Of course, if you're not feeling well, they do ask that students stay at home. And of course, our nurses are readily available during school day to provide assessments and consultations with students. I'll know about the point-of-care testing that's available to students in that part of the report. Let me start. Last board meeting, last couple of board meetings, I think, there was a question from a board member in terms of the update on the co-principal model, so I thought I'd take a minute or two to bring you up to date on that. As you recall, we impart a new model for the beginning of the school year where we have created co-principals at both the middle school and high school. Specifically, Mr. Burns and Mr. Thorson are sharing that, that role. First, I wanna shout out to both Mr. Burns and Mr. Thorson because part of the, the ability to pull this off really required two individuals that were open-minded to a new process and two individuals that are obsessive about how they communicate with, communicate with each other and how they interoperate. And I can quickly see, as we did some investigation of other districts who've done co-principals in the same building and other models, it was reported back to me that some of the difficulties tended to revolve around personality conflicts or the sentiment that one person was more dominant than another or was getting bit of, and that wasn't the case here. We were doing it purely because we saw an opportunity to try something that might improve on the situation that we had. So first and foremost, we're three months in, so it's still a little bit early to fully evaluate and assess the effectiveness of this model. But we have some early indications of some things that have worked well and some other things that are still a little bit of a challenge and we continue to work on. Of the things that we think have improved, that is access. Mr. Burns has made himself available to high school teachers. He's spent a lot of time in various classrooms and we believe that the attention that we're now giving, giving curriculum and instruction at both buildings has been heightened through this, through this model. We see some improvements in RTI, the response intervention, particularly with our students during COVID. That's an important aspect of trying to address what some call learning loss, but I prefer to call unfinished learning, things that our students maybe didn't have an opportunity to learn during COVID and how do we, how do we catch them up? Just this past week, we posted, based on some of the grant funding that we anticipate on receiving. Not all the grants have been approved yet, but we did have some postings in terms of after-school tutoring services multiple times a week that will be available at the middle school and high school once those positions are filled. In an attempt to make sure that our students get the support they need to, to stay on track or to make up some of their, some of the ground that they may, may have missed. Mr. Thorson is working hard with both assistant principals. If you remember, one objective of the new model was to continue to build the capacity of assistant principals to provide greater leadership within their individual buildings. And if you remember, as I described the co-principal model, one of the things I thought was important is that it was, it was going to be the time that Mr. Thorson and Mr. Burns spend in the building was not gonna be based on a schedule. It's gonna be based on a task. So it was very conceivable that both of them would be in the same building at the same time, working on different things. And so the gut said, the, the success of the plan is incumbent upon our current assistant principals to meet the, the needs of the building on any given daily basis. And Mr. Thorson is working very, very hard with those principals, assistant principals to meet that goal. He's also working with middle school guidance teams. And as you can imagine, that with both of them wanting to do a thorough job, that there, we did see some redundancy. We saw some meetings where both were being present because they needed to get up to speed and they needed to build their own capacity in terms of figuring out where each of them needed to be and when. So as they have worked through that process, we've seen that improve and through conversations that they're having, they're deciding who needs to be at what meetings and what's important for each of them to be involved in. So I think that's moving and progressing very nicely. We also, we, we know that one of the, you know, there's always some, if you've been a building principal for multiple years in the building, there are people become comfortable with going to you. There's relationships that are built. And when there's changes made, we want to make sure that we are addressing the staff's concerns and student concerns. And so that, I think early on, there was a little bit of confusion in terms of who do I go to for what problems? And as we move forward in the process, we're hopefully also clarifying that and that staff and students are becoming more comfortable with approaching either of them with their concerns. But we continue to monitor that and continue to work through those issues. As a, as an attempt to try to mitigate that, early on, we, we did create a flowchart for staff that kind of showed them, if you're having an issue with a certain topic, here is the, kind of the continuum of people you should speak to so that we can reduce some of that confusion. But admittedly, you have somebody that's always helped you solve an issue, you tend to wanna gravitate back towards that person. So we continue to work through those little, those small challenges and that's pretty much just an overview of what's been going on the last three months. We wanna give it some more time and we'll certainly kind of continue to monitor it. And again, report back to the board in the spring where we will then decide whether this is something that was extremely beneficial and we'd like to continue, or something that was a good test or proof of concept that we, although we acknowledge had some benefits, might potentially have some greater liability and we could go back to a more traditional model, but it's way too premature to bring us to that conclusion at this point. So that's, that's my kind of overview of what's going on with the co-principal model. Moving on to, and in the order of which I'm presenting this has no bearing on significance because I think what Mia mentioned is extraordinarily important. We worked very diligently several years ago on, because of events back then, to work on our school safety and security plans. If you recall, we brought in a private security consultant back in nineteen to help us. I'm a firm believer that although as administrators, we have some sense of what we should be doing in terms of security. It was clear that at that point, having somebody who was an expert in that field made a lot of sense. So in Needham Associates, they, they worked with dozens upon dozens of schools in New York State on security and safety-related issues, and we had them do a full assessment. Based on that assessment, we then had some action items and those action items were shared, were shared with the board in executive section because many contained perhaps security concerns that needed to be addressed, but could not be addressed in public because it would divulge potentially some of our strategies to mitigate events that could take place. I am very pleased to say that that was March of nineteen, by August of nineteen, we had addressed all, if not, we addressed most, if not all, of those concerns that the security consultant brought up, some of which perhaps were items that needed to be part of our capital outlay projects. You know, if you recall, over the last few years, we've done some upgrades in terms of our door access controls and our lockdown, our lockdown procedures. I do wanna mention that we still perform all of the required drills each year. Not only fire drills, which were very important, but our lockdown, lockout and shelter-in-place drills. I will mention that some of those drills have been modified during COVID to keep students safe within the classroom environment as to not create a situation where we're exacerbating the spread of COVID. But we do still, are required by this education department to hold those drills and do hold them. And we do hold them and have in the past with local law enforcement involved. So usually our sheriff, our Chatham police and the state police are involved in our lockdown drills. And not to go too much into commentary, which you've seen on, on television, how important that is for us to do that. And, and Mia, thank you, and I will make sure that we follow Mr. Thorson because we can't forget how important it is for our students to understand what to do in those situations. If you see some of the news reports, you'll see where it was very important that those students knew how to properly barricade themselves in a classroom and not be persuaded to open the door for anybody except law enforcement. So those are the kinds of things that we go through during the drills, but we wanna make sure that we're very thorough in that doing that. I think those are my notes for security. The, going on to a little bit about COVID, we're now in our second week of employee testing, employee surveillance testing. We're testing here on Tuesdays, Tuesday mornings. This is where the nurses, the nurse and the support staff from Questar Three Voces representing the Columbia County Department of Health come in and test those employees who have either unvaccinated or undisclosed. Last week, both weeks, we had approximately thirty employees participate in that testing. And today, we actually had our first positive case that was determined from, from the testing program. Employees do not, are not required to be tested here by us. We have a, a window of time for the entire week. We offer the test here on Tuesdays as a convenience, but employees who are more comfortable securing a test outside of here just simply need to provide proof of the test, test date and negative result to us sometime before Friday at 2:00 PM to, to come to work the following week. And, and the only other thing to note is that if any, any of the employees who were unvaccinated were positive, as long as they are within ninety days of their date of positive result, then they, they are, they are excluded from the testing program. In terms of the point-of-care tests.
Say that again.
So if you are, if you have been, if you're positive from COVID,
Yeah.
you do not have to test each week for a period of ninety days of the time that you were positive. In terms of our point-of-care program, I'm pleased to report that we started with employees on November fifteenth and we added students shortly thereafter. That program, if you recall, if a teacher or if a staff person or student becomes symptomatic at, at work or school, then they can, they'll go down to the nurse and the nurse will work with the parents to determine whether they would like to have a point-of-care test. We had sent out a survey to parents in early November. For those parents that we received the consent, the nurse has a record of that and can go ahead and test. If the, if we do not have a record of consent, then the nurse contacts the parent and there have been a few instances of that this past last week where parents have then given consent through email and then when they come, when they sign the consent form, I'd say in general, and that's regardless of vaccination status, it doesn't matter whether you're vaccinated or unvaccinated. If you are symptomatic, we will offer you a point-of-care test. And that has been really well received. Just kind of anecdotal. If you think about it, two things that it helps us with, if a student is symptomatic, they have nausea, nausea, they're nauseous, they have a runny nose and the nurse decides it would be COVID-like symptoms, it would test them and they test negative, then the, you know, the, the result stops there. We don't have to contact the other buildings and siblings don't have to go home as a precaution. Now, if this, we still follow pre-COVID protocols, so if the student isn't feeling well, they still might be sent home, but they don't have, the parents, and this is the other part that parents appreciate, they don't have to seek a a point-of-care test outside of, outside of here. So it's, it's much more convenient. So that's, that's going along really well. Again, that's part of the ELC grant through Columbia County. You've heard the report here before that Columbia County was the first to receive the machines. There's a machine in every built, school building in Columbia County. And now, just this past week, Rensselaer and Green Counties are rolling out their point-of-care machines and in those districts, they're begun point-of-care testing. So I, I was too upped about our winter concert, so I won't, you heard that our concert is, is Thursday. I did want to, if Elijah's still here, mention that we and a couple of our teachers accompanied students to NISBA in Rochester this past week and we had a great showing out there. It was an awesome opportunity for our students. And so thank you to our music teachers who allowed for our students to have that, that opportunity. And, oh, and then I should mention that next week, the next Wednesday at the high school as well, on the fifty, the grade, grade seventy will perform in their winter concert. I think that's my report for this evening.
Anyone have any questions or comments? That sounds important. I have one. Okay. Just in turn of the testing, I know that Voces is driving the train and I assume that, I don't know if we're actually aware or coordinating the supply chain, but do we know that materials are readily available, whatever kits or stuff that we need, it's, it's adequate that we, as far as we know?
So yeah, let me, let me give you two, kind of two updates. One, on the point-of-care side, the county, when they ordered the machine, ordered twenty-five hundred tests. You know, we've probably gone through a dozen. They were allotted by district and by size. So really, really good shape from a point-of-care test perspective. And then we're also in kind of neat shape in terms of the antigen tests. Up until recently, you heard me report that, you know, Voces ordered thirty-five thousand back in September and they got E. And they were to the point where they were almost out of tests. Well, what Columbia County did is they used some of their ELC funding to purchase tests on their own. So Columbia County bought thirty-five thousand antigen test kits. Now, they were not the Abbott, they were called ClearView, so they were an alternative FDA-approved product. But they went ahead, because of their knowledge of the supply chain constraints, went ahead and purchased those and those are now being used in all Columbia County schools for the testing of staff on, on a weekly basis. Now, since within the last, the end of last week, Questar did receive another partial shipment of about eight thousand tests from the New York State Department of Health and is now distributing those to the other schools. So there was a, there was kind of a dual benefit. Not only the tests that Columbia County purchased helped the Columbia County schools, but that then allowed Questar to take us out of the distribution of their tests and it benefited the Rensselaer and Green County schools because the remainder of those test kits they had could be redistributed amongst them. So right now, the test kit situation is, is, is not an issue in Columbia County at all.
Just to follow up, do you happen to know, because I don't know as of today, just what Columbia County, the transmission rate is?
You know?
It's above four hundred cases per one hundred thousand.
You know what? So I, I have my, while you're, while I'm stalling real quick, I have my bookmarks right here. See if I can grab that. I looked that up today and I just, because it is, it is steadily on the line right now. Columbia County, so you're getting this hot off press today. And as of the seventh, our positivity rate is at nine point four three percent. Two hundred and fifty-nine cases or four hundred and thirty-five per hundred thousand. So.
That's a significant jump.
Yeah, I've been, I've been kind of tracking it. I will also mention one of the other metrics that was reported to me on Monday, so this is a little bit, couple of days old. The countywide vaccination rate for ages five through eleven is twenty-one point four. So twenty-one point four percent of what the county feels are in that age group have been vaccinated. I will tell you that we do plan and they need to figure out our population that's vaccinated, but we're gonna wait till after the December break. Mainly because the clinic that was readily available to our students on November seventeenth, the second dose, is this Thursday. And then students in that age group who receive the second vaccine are considered fully vaccinated two weeks after that. So in January, when we return from school, I'd like to, I'm gonna send out another parent survey asking parents to indicate whether their students are, parents who choose to indicate whether their students are vaccinated. The only other thing that I will mention and Columbia County, Green County backed off on this a little bit, that we were, Rensselaer County went ahead and reduced some of the quarantining parameters on buses to, to be a lesser distance. And it was being entertained in Columbia County as well. That's where we're now finding our highest number of students who are, continue to be quarantined. If you recall, the quarantine chart, for the most part, our students are separated in the classroom by three foot or more and that prevents them from being quarantined in a situation. We're having a little bit of a problem with the, with the lunchrooms at, or the lunchroom at MED and a shout out to Kristen and Brett who took a look at additional space on the stage and, and the configuration of how the students were eating. And they've spread them out a little more, so we've been able to kind of minimize the impact in the lunchroom to a little greater extent than we did initially. But the bus still tends to be the area where, you know, a a positive case in a, in a location on the bus could take, take out up to seventeen students. But the county felt that because of the rate rise, dramatic rise in cases, that this wasn't the time to back off on our protocols and that they visited after the holiday break to see where things were and consider whether they would make modifications like some of the other counties.
When did, when did Rensselaer implement that?
They did a pilot about two weeks ago, so, and I should have mentioned, it is a pilot, because they're going to monitor and see if there was any, any.
Right, but presumably quite early January, we're gonna have pretty good data on that.
Okay, absolutely.
Okay. Anyone else? All right. Policy committee stand up. What are you working on? What's next? Any feedback or resourcing?
Um, yeah, we're actually doing pretty well. We finalized three policies. Your policies assessed last week that are now going to be looked with a review. The three policies were interrelated. One had to do with non-discrimination, the other one was sexual harassment, and then the third one on bullying. And they're interrelated, obviously, in many respects. One major one is because we have complaint forms. Rather than having two complaint forms for every policy, we kind of have now have one complaint form we're using for all three policies to simplify this. It's understandable when NISBA and BOCs develop these policies, they do one size fits all and they're not necessarily, they're great for a big district, but not necessarily for a smaller district. These two of them to fit us. Make it look a little easier for the administration because we don't have a whole department just addressing policy and administration. So those three, hopefully we will see something back before the new year. And you'll be seeing them for the first meeting, maybe the next week, if not the first meeting in January. So those have taken time. They were fairly likely that were rather involved and we want to make sure that they were tailored they said necessary to fit Chad and be sent to administration. There are a couple of other smaller changes, the policy required changes that we kind of spread around the chain committee members and they're looking at them to make sure, you know, see what needs to be addressed. If we actually have to amend our policies. So we'll be talking about first of January. January, if there's any changes, you'll be seeing those. Those three clearly. The other thing that we have started talking about in policies is that, that our five, every five years, we go do a whole new policy, total policy review. Our five years is this year. Obviously, we're a little bit behind. So we've, Debbie managed to get out, get quotes from BOC's area, Queen Policy Services and Minnesota, the other policy service. So we have their quotes in house. And we're going to start some initial discussions as to what is going to, you know, what should we be doing for this next round? And probably for next year and obviously have a recommendation for buying it. So we have to develop.
Is, is this the type of thing that's sizable enough to go out and do an RFP? Where you think that there's really just a couple of policy review services in the state? There's only two? Yeah, this isn't an RFP.
Yeah. And, and essentially they're, they're pretty much standard, almost like off the shelf package.
Did, did we do a formal review last time? I know that there was a lot of work right before I joined on that.
Yes, it was, it took two years when we did it last time. And, and there was still, over the last couple of years, we've still been doing a lot of cleanup as we address policies. Honestly, I don't foresee this next go around is going to be as maybe as involved as the last one. We shall see.
I was gonna add, it sounds like, you know, I wasn't here last go around, but just from the discussion we've had, it sounds like it's going to be a lot more streamlined this time around.
Yeah, I think we know which, you know, how we want to go. We, we've already, we've addressed, you know, we know what some of our concerns are. So we can kind of address them upfront. And so I, I think, you know, we'll be going into it a lot better maybe prepared this time.
I know. Let's stand up on my stump here, take my wore hat off for a second. We went over the sexual harassment policy last time. I had some concerns that I'm not sure were answered last cycle. So as you're sitting there thinking through, I would like the reporting process to be very, very, very simple. And I think it's challenging to make it as simple as it should be. There's a lot of, there's a lot to think about there. But in terms of, I think, easy to find and easy to report without without concerns related to the reporting process itself.
Yeah, I think that's what we tried to simplify the reporting process itself. Also, the policy making it a lot more clearer and more explanatory. So if somebody could read the policy and have a very better idea of what, you know, the concerns are, what they need to be, you know, paying attention to.
Great. Looking forward to those. Okay. And you don't mean anything?
Not right now.
Okay, great. All right, we're on to consensus agenda. R forty-three, the resolve of the Board of Education accept consensus agenda H through I has written. Can I have a motion?
Motion.
Questions or comments on this list? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, we are into items for future agenda. Does anyone have any new items to table for today?
Not an item, but just popping my head. How are their subsituations?
We're, we're doing okay on two fronts. One, the the number of absences in our buildings, although still probably higher than usual for various reasons, is on most days manageable and we're getting a decent number of subs. I don't know. We'll go over and see Kristen, Mike. Any of you guys worry about this every morning at 5:00 AM? We had, let's put it this way, unlike some other districts, I don't know if this is the last half of the year full, we haven't had to shut down a building based on lack of staffing or busing. So I guess we're better than most districts that have, have had to do that. But I still know it's, it's a challenge on a daily basis. You're doing a lot of shuffling around. And.
We, we do the seven AM shuffle. It's the very first thing we do when we come in. And we, we just piecemeal it together as best we can. You know, sometimes people are willing to give up their prep time to cover a class. We did have three brand new subs in the building today who are current parents and former parents. So that was wonderful to see them in a different capacity and they really enjoyed their day. So that's promising.
I'd say we're holding our own is a good way to describe it.
Yeah, for, for, for anyone online who didn't hear that, there's a little bit of a morning scramble, but we're making it work.
I was just short breaking. I was just curious. Compared to say this time last year, do you notice like better, same or worse? Relating this up. We shut down buildings last year.
It's different. You know, it's available school. We're in a hybrid situation. So it's, it's kind of hard to compare the two.
Definitely. I, I just, I guess I was just thinking in terms of availability of, of subs.
I would say subs are more available now than they were last year.
Good. Progress.
For sure.
Okay, this may be a record. So we're, we've circled back around to second public comment. The intent for the second public comment period is really to give the public a chance to chime in with their comments on agenda that came up during today's meeting. So this is intended to be a shorter comment period, but if anyone wants to raise their hand and speak about today's agenda?
And you can have, we do have two online.
Great. If anyone in the room wants to jump in the same time sheet.
Yes, I'm going to start with Sandy Fisher. Sandy, I'm going to promote you. So give it a minute.
We might want to start with an audio check too, right?
I'm stalking you guys outside in the hallway because I'm chauffeuring the girls' basketball game. So if you guys get done early, you should pop down to the gym and see our, our girls working hard to, to win against Rensselaer. That's all I had to say.
I'm promoting you now.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, I can't hear you though now.
I have to mute the house mic while you talk.
I, I got you now. All right. So I wouldn't want to go for one of these meetings when out, without having one of my speeches handy and have you go at night without listening to me or not listening to me either way. But I guess what I want to say is vaccinated versus unvaccinated at this point, like, does it really matter? Because we've noticed that there's more spread with the vaccinated in our schools. So I'm still confused as to why we're only testing unvaccinated and why we're still segregating. But I, I guess being held accountable isn't very comfortable. Holding you accountable isn't comfortable, but both are necessary to ensure the proper culture for our children in this community to be safe, equitable and provide a great learning environment. Having employees of this district slander us, look at our kids differently, discriminate, discriminate against them, it isn't comfortable. You owe them an apology and you should be ashamed of your actions, actually your lack of actions that is hurting our children and our students. You claim you are just following the science or the CDC or the Department of Health, but yet you dismiss Nobel Prize winner Carrie Mullins, who invented the PCR test and stated Fauci is misusing his test to fudge the numbers. You dismiss Luke Montaner, an expert epidemiologist and another Nobel Prize winner who has been outspoken about the mass vaccinations. You dismiss Robert, Dr. Robert Malone, who invented the mRNA technology that led to this vaccine. But you listen to habitually criminal companies who are forcing people to receive a product made by criminal companies who are not held liable for the injuries or deaths the vaccines are causing. And now we find out the vaccine doesn't even prevent transmission of the virus. Why are you doing this? These people continue to censor facts about what is really going on and you are okay with it. Name a time in history when the governments were censoring people and it was what ended up being best for those people. Judges around the country are stopping these mandates because it violates our freedom, hasn't been proven to work, et cetera. What do we do here as a superintendent and a board? Nothing, absolutely nothing. You sit here silent and you do nothing. In case you still believe you pushing the vaccines, masking our kids and discriminating against them is the right choice, I want you to think about this. The vaccine has been out long enough. How has your decisions helped our student body? Have you prevented COVID in Chatham? Answer is absolutely not. More vaccinated students have tested positive in the middle school and the high school than unvaccinated. When will you admit you made the wrong decision and then fix it? Keeping our fine students, such as the ones here tonight, unfortunately, there's not many there tonight, but others from playing, you're doing more harm than more good by keeping them from playing. That's it.
Thank you, Shannon. And let me just reassure you, we really do look forward to any type of public comment. There are months that go by where we wonder if anyone cares sometimes in these meetings. So it is to have community feedback.
And how we feel.
So I think we have any more digital, any more digital hands? Did anyone sign up? Okay. So I think we, I'm not sure that we're breaking any records, but that was a quick run through the agenda here. We don't anticipate a need for a, an executive session. So motion to adjourn, can I have a motion?
Motion. I, I didn't hear that.
I want to make sure.
Maybe a second. All in favor? I'm getting adjourned.